Good afternoon. We call the meeting of the Libri County Board of Commissioners to order. Ms. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, have.
That's our budget, well. Mr. Moses, I'm going to default again to your quick standing for our prayer and our pledge.
Most kind and benevolent Father, we come before your presence today to transact business for this community in this county. We pray that Father God you would be with them, give them divine insight as they transact this business. And we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us on a daily basis. This we thank you for in the powerful and penetrating name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. And everybody said, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're getting better. Close on the gap.
Yeah.
I'm trying to tell you. Oh, man, too long. Who's come? Absolutely.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to turn to the hands of staff for the presentation. Ms. Sam, you're going to pull it up for us on the screen. Just walk us through where we left off, and then we'll take it from there.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm here to present a summary of the FY24 budget as proposed. Oh. Too much to know. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for Samantha. Is this changed any way from the other evening? Everything is the same as it was?
Yes, sir.
So as far as Robert's Rules of Order, we had a three-three vote. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct.
So right now, the budget stands where it's at?
Right now.
So this is a new budget we're looking at?
No, she's just going to take it.
No, sir.
She's going to recap.
The budget y'all voted on would have taken effect July 1st. You're still under your current budget. So she's just going back hitting the review for what's proposed to start July 1st.
And that's, and we've already seen that the other night in the meeting.
That's correct.
And that's the one we voted on.
That's correct.
So what are we doing now? Are we revoting on it again?
You're going to consider budget options today to start the July fiscal year for whatever y'all want to do.
And you got the options?
I got, based on Chairman's guidance, Commissioner Walden. We're going to take a look at what y'all looked at to start that meeting. And then if you want to consider some options, that's up to y'all.
So you're the only one that knows what we're looking at?
There were some options sent from one commissioner to only certain commissioners. And there was some options sent from one commissioner to all commissioners.
We all see it today.
When did you send those? Because I didn't see but one option. Where's, where's the paperwork?
Chairman, Chairman, if, if we can, go ahead, and then I will show that. And I'll let those commissioners that submitted them explain to Commissioner Walden what's going on.
All right, sir.
Continue. Okay. Uh, just to recap on where our proposed FY24 budget is. The departments all sent in their request, and we compiled it, and it was over sixty-five point one million. Through our budget workshops with the Board of Commissioners, Admin and Finance, we made budget cuts totaling seven point one million to bring us to our proposed FY24 budget of fifty-seven point seven million. This is an increase from last year FY23's budget of sixteen point four percent, or a little over eight million. Our proposed new personnel for FY24, it includes the salary study implementation, approximately one point five million, as well as some new positions for the county in addition to merit and longevity. Currently, is proposed three point four five five million. And this next slide shows more detail of the actual positions that are, that are currently being proposed to be added to the county. And this is, this is my recap.
The other thing that we were talking about is, and these commissioners, I hope you'll speak up. Commissioner Giger submitted a spreadsheet to myself and the chairman. That's incorporated on this sheet. Commissioner Stevens sent this to everybody with a couple of suggestions on there. I believe that was there before yesterday, if I remember right. All I did for y'all today is just incorporate those comments.
Thank you, sir.
So the first part of that sheet was what Commissioner Giger submitted. And he submitted basically salaries, well, basically the changes you see there with recommendations. All I did was go over there and take the numbers he had submitted for consideration by the board and just projected for those things to continue to be funded at what portion they would need to be funded or when, basically, during the year. And I just made those notes. Here listed is last quarter fiscal year funding items up on the first part. As far as the salary implementation plan, number one, I went down there to the left, and I gave you the plan that you had talked about submitting, your monthly cost for that plan, so you could put it into effect any month you wanted to. His relates, funding proposal relates to a March 1 of '24 date, which originally was scheduled for a July 1 of '23 date. The number proposed for merit there, the one fifteen five, basically would mean that that would come in in May of '24. There were no notes here for the longevity, because it just is based on longevity. It's a one-time payment out at Christmas time. So that's the only notes that I made there. The proposed savings over his proposal would be two point three one one million to do that. And I would stop and see if I missed anything.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Chairman, um, right after our meeting, I guess a couple of weeks ago, I knew that we were at a deadlock. And so I got the, um, the report that Samantha sent it to me. And I was just looking at some options for consideration. I didn't know, you know, in particular, when I made these changes, I just went in and, um, with the intent to let's cut so that we could, when the digest comes out, that, you know, we have a better chance of maybe even keeping the millage the same or maybe even lower the millage. These numbers in, in the start date for this, that, and the other, you know, I didn't take that into consideration. But I was just trying to give to Joy and Chairman and Samantha, you know, what if we did this? And, and that's what this spreadsheet is. Again, I didn't know, have any idea about the proposed start dates. I think Joy just said something about March 1 versus, um, um, I didn't have a time in mind when I was saying the cut. So I, I think, um, if you look at the second to the last column, where it says zero, the recommendation was that we do not approve any, any of those recommendations. And that's, that's where the zero come from. And I think that's where you can see where the savings was. And there may have even been a decrease in certain positions, like maybe cutting them in half. I think if you look at, um, the one seventy-nine, hundred seventy-nine thousand, that was just cut in half. So it was just math. It wasn't, um, let's do this starting at this date or starting at that date. And, and I only did that. I wish now that I had, uh, shared it with, um, with everyone, but I didn't because I was just, um, just trying. I thought that we all were going to go back and, and look at it and that it would have been maybe some recommendations from, you know, from all of us at one time or another. I did see the, um, a list, it wasn't with numbers on it. I did see a list of maybe five or six things that we could consider that came from Commissioner Stevens. But there, there were no numbers associated with that, with those recommendations. So, you know, and I put this here because, um, as I told y'all in the email yesterday, you know, my intent is to, um, number one, take care of the existing county employees. When I say take care of them, you know, they stood with us through a worldwide pandemic for two and, two and a half, three years. And I think that they need to be compensated for their dedication. We did a salary study, and we wanted to bring our salaries up so that we could retain our good, hard-working employees. And my intent was to take care of the ones we got, if we could. And when I say ta-take care of them, that's a merit increase for the ones that, uh, that warrant a merit increase. That's the cost of living for the ones that, um, that be here at the end of the year. And that's what people refer to as the Christmas bonus. That's, that's what I was considering. So you, if we got, let's say for sake of conversation, a hundred and fifty employees, all a hundred and fifty get that. And if we can afford any addition, let's do that if we could. But it was also contingent upon that we don't do nothing but pay the bills, for the most part, in the email yesterday, until we get a feel for what the digest brings in. And if the digest brings, um, good news, where we can afford more than what I just talked about, then by all means, let's do that. But my goal is to, number one, take care of our existing employees and either keep the, the taxes the same or lower them if we can. And again, this spreadsheet here was just an attempt to try to find some areas that we can cut. Thank you.
Next piece, Mr. Chairman, I just took Commissioner Stevens' notes there. Closing Lake George Fire Station and bringing those folks to Miller Station, that total cost to run Lake George Station is seven hundred eighty-one thousand a year. So that would add, not, that, that would add two hundred and forty-three thousand more to what the savings proposed for the sheet submitted by Commissioner Giger there. The Medicaid for non-retirees, unfortunately, we have to withhold that. We pay it through social security, so there's really no cost savings there. Collected from the Dusel Authority, I think we briefly discussed that. That money is in the process of being dispersed over to us, from what I understand, and then we'll disperse it to the taxing agencies. But again, no direct impact to this year's budget. The adjust funds from the hospital, basically, as we took over EMS last year, increased our budget about one point one million. That would be something you could consider at millage time that would affect the hospital millage to do that. And then stop monies being paid out to nonprofits. The only ones that I could see were actually Chamber of Commerce for thirty thousand dollars and Friends of Liberty for six, that'd be thirty-six thousand. So that would be an additional two hundred seventy-nine thousand four twenty-two on the savings that under Commissioner Stevens has submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I had, I had a question here. And I appreciate Commissioner Giger looking over this and reviewing it and coming up with these numbers. But I'm concerned over here where zero savings on the court-wide juvenile court. Have the, is that right? Would, was, was that zero? So the other counties, have they voted on that or no? Or are we leaving that the same?
No, sir, I mean, I'm.
The same.
Do we leave that the same?
The recommendation is the same as the salary and benefits.
Okay.
If, if, to the far, to the right, Commissioner Thrift, to the right, um, the far-right column.
Okay, it's the same.
If it's zero, then it's the same.
Same, okay. And then the, um, the salary study, the implementation, and I know you said that Mr. Brown just put this data out, there was March.
So the salaries, yes, ma'am.
We have.
Maybe a little, there, so the salary study, without going in, I mean, you, you couldn't just take a dollar amount and shave it off a salary study because it's affecting all the job steps and job positions. So my recommendation there is that you fund it because it is what it is, unless you can go all the way back and look at the study again and look at cutting that or going to some other option, is you just look at delayed date of implementation in order to be able to save money this budget year. But so as far as trying to just apply dollar value to the pay plan without going back into the plan and letting Dr. Condrick
Right.
look at some other options, you really just couldn't take money off of it.
Yeah, that, that, that's kind of what I was looking at there, that I, I don't know. I mean, we had waited so long for that study plan to get back. I can't see in justifying cutting anything off of there.
Yeah, uh, but Commissioner Thrift, on my, again, this is just an attempt to try to cut where we could. That date of March 3rd and the other date of, um, May 1st, Mr. Brown put that in there after I had conversations with he, with he and Samantha. I, I had no idea when this was. Again, I, I did simple math because I, I think I took something, and it was, it was a percentage. And so when those numbers down at the bottom, where it starts off salary study, uh, implementation plan A, those numbers that I got highlighted in green, I highlighted them green because I had a question, because I didn't know how we came to that. And Joy explained that. And when Joy explained that, that was contrary to my math calculation that I put in. And, and then Joy assigned dates to that. That's, that's not mine. My, mine was just to try to carve where we could.
Okay, I understand. But, you know, what you have in, in green affects our employees. And, you know, I would, my thought pattern would leave the employees alone that we currently have because we waited so long. And they have been with us through the two, three-year pandemic. And longevity's always been set, as far as I know, that we give that out as a Christmas bonus in December. But let's, those three items is less than a million dollars. So I, I don't know that I, that I would be one point two. I don't know that I would be in favor of doing anything with the employees' salaries.
Well, and, and again, that's, that, that.
I know that's just a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not in favor of that either. And, and after Joy explained it, I'll say, well, you know, um, let's not do it.
Okay.
That, that was in, I, I don't think that this spreadsheet doesn't, doesn't, um, repeat that. But that was my, um, email to Joy, Chairman, and, um, and Samantha that, um, you know, I say, can we do this? And long story made short, Joy said, no. And I said, well, if we can't do that, then fine, maybe we can look at something else. It was never my intent. I think I started my, um, conversation today that the first thing was to take care of the employees. So, so there's no way I would want that to be the first thing. And then I say, well, you know, um, the second thing would be to cut them. That's, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Chair. I'm looking at on this sheet where you've got firefighters to cut the fourteen firefighters from Miller Park. And I guess bring that on, Mr. Brown, the last quarter of, uh, '24?
Well, what I did, again, I took the proposed number from Commissioner Giger. And I said, if you want, if you did that, then that number would equate to waiting until the last quarter to be able to do that.
Okay. When is that building due to be completed?
Probably Commissioner Stevens, if the weather holds out, probably September, October.
So if this was the goal, like it is, that means we will have a brand-new building that we will cut the ribbon on and close the doors?
Well, again, um, I did simple math by cutting it in half. And those, that stuff that's outside of the headings, the stuff that's outside of the column, that was added by Mr. Brown now. And as for, um, cutting the ribbon on the fire station and, um, and keeping the doors closed, that, there is no ribbon to be cut today. And there was no ribbon to be cut yesterday. And there's no ribbon that we're going to cut tomorrow. So, um, my point of looking at that, and all I'm doing is trying to look at ways to, um, to hopefully keep the tax base the same. My whole thought about that, and that's why one of the recommendations was, is that, um, you know, we don't have it today, and we could probably do it out of tomorrow. And that's one of the line items that I looked at, maybe we could find a savings. Nothing more, nothing less.
And what about the, uh, the four, four other firefighters?
It's the same thing for every place where, um, where I went in looking for ways and recommendations. I think that's what my column said, recommendations. If you look at the sheet, the presentation that Samantha has, she stops at, uh, salary and benefits. But, um, that recommendation was something that I put in, and that savings was something that I put in. And that the, the wording and the numbers to the right of that is something that Joy had, I guess for the sake of conversation, if we decided to go that way.
Okay, the last, the last one would be the sixty-one-ten recreation. And the coroner's position. They, they've got zeros and nos, and we're working on a gym. So how will we manage the gym, Mr. Brown?
I, I could answer that. I don't know how we would manage it, but, um, I recommend that we, um, that we use what we got. That's my recommendation. Oh, I go down there every now and then and help out.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I guess, Mr. Brown, uh, I guess we'll just start from, from the last question about sixty-one-ten with the recreation. How many full-time employees do we have at the Recreation Department currently? Do you know?
Down there, at that site, you've got, um, one full-time groundkeeper and one full-time facility maintenance manager and a part-time recreation. facility maintenance manager and a part-time recreation assistant.
Okay. I, I guess I'm just going back and, and looking at the zeros. And Commissioner Gilliard, I do appreciate your, your, your time that you spent to try to figure out some type of way where we could, you know, move forward, you know? No one ever wants to raise taxes. But also, I know in the past, all of us have been, as, as a body, has been fully committed to public safety in the recent years, from the fire departments to everything in, in between. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can move forward and even without firefighters. Mr. Brown, I, I see, like I said, Commissioner Gilliard is, is requesting. So, Mr. Gill, one question. So whenever you're cutting in, in half, are you cutting the staff in half instead of fourteen-seven on line item thirty-five-hundred?
Well, I guess it would be, if, if all things being equal, if all fourteen, for instance, on thirty-five-thirty, if all fourteen was going to be coming and making the same thing, and since I cut it in half, then, then it would be in half. It'd be four, half of, half of fourteen is seven and what's left would be divided evenly among the seven. I didn't know if that was, if one was a captain, one was a lieutenant, one was a private. I, I don't know, I didn't know what the salaries was.
Right.
I just took the number for the sake of trying to, trying to cut and trying to find a savings. And, and I'll back up a little bit, Commissioner Fraser. I'm, I'm committed, I'm committed. I think when I came on, and I don't know how many years we've been talking about this countywide fire plan, I'm for public safety, police, fire, and everything. But I do know, and I think one of the emails that I sent to, again, I wish I would have sent it to everybody, maybe we could move a little farther than this. But, but the ones that I did send to the chairman, to Mr. Brown and to Samantha, that said, and I think I've been on here, this is my fifteenth year, and they may have been talk of a countywide fire plan before I got here. I know it's been, seemed like it's been one on here since I've been here. And, and we moved forward. And we were blessed enough to put some, some capital projects on splosh to build these buildings. But I think my question was, and it was more of a rhetorical question to Mr. Brown, to Samantha, well, not necessarily Samantha, but Joey, was had we known ten, twelve years ago what we know now, that on this date, we would be looking at the possibility of raising taxes? And we don't know how much because we don't have the digest. But, but just knowing with the numbers that we do have, that we are looking at a sixteen percent increase and a eight million dollar increase, sixteen percent and eight million dollars. Had we known, and let's say if the countywide fire plan was talked about twenty years ago or fifteen years ago, had we known fifteen years ago that in twenty-twenty-three, that this is what we was talking about, I would like to think that everybody here would have said, no, we can't do that. That's just my thought.
All right. I guess I'm, I'm just, and, and I understand what you're saying completely. But I, I just have, have a, a question, I guess, for, for the chairman and, and the body. And I guess, Mr. Brown. From the firefighter perspective, and I see Commissioner Stevens also made a suggestion about closing the Lake George Fire Station and bringing them to, to the headquarters. And it could possibly save us some, some money as well in a reduction. Is that, is that feasible from a safety standpoint?
So the original fire plan called for, didn't call for a manned station at Lake George, but realizing we needed somebody to run the central area. There were minor modifications made about two years ago now to the Lake George Station. And the commission made the decision to go ahead and staff so that we could put some people there. The original plan did not call for a station there. Called for the Miller Park Station location and the others that have been built.
Right.
I hope that answers your question. Now, I, as far as call volume and call runs, though, does it help to have it there? Yes, sir.
Okay.
If it wasn't fully staffed, it would go back to being an apparatus station, much like Alawite, and then folks would respond to that station to get equipment as needed.
All right. All right, I, I guess, with, with looking at both the recommendations from, from the fire standpoint, would we be able to, to do less now? And also with the difficulties to even fulfill these jobs? Or I guess the question I have with that, are these more of a, a place fillers?
So these.
Because they're, they're, we, we have the, we have to budget for those positions. But if we don't have the people to, to be in the positions, it's more of a, a place filler, correct?
It is. So, so, you know, there's a couple of things there that I would say is that, right now, you've got about thirteen vacancies that are already funded in fire. And so filling those is difficult. I don't really see, and talking with Chief Darby, I really don't see if the station comes online in February, I mean, in October, November. I don't know that it hurts. You will need these positions, staffed and funded, to fully operate Miller, right? But, you know, the ability to go in there and fill twenty-four positions between now and December is not realistic.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I do think that if you wanted to take that money, you're going to put it in a reserve account, you know, take, take the savings proposed, put, put the two forty-three in the reserve account. It won't go anywhere. You'll get a chance to look at your digest. You can get another talk about it then. So you're not billing for it, so to speak, yet. And then if, at, at the, at the very worst, go ahead and fund it starting in the last quarter of next year or second quarter, that last quarter of the fiscal year, I think you'd be fine. I mean, really do. You got a graduating class that's going to come out of recruits that hopefully will fill the existing vacancies or most of them. And then you'd be in a position to consider the other ones needed.
And that would be a savings of a quarter of a million?
Of, of this, of this fiscal year, of course, it moves that can to a full funding for next year.
Right.
But it would, it would save you two forty-three, four twenty, run roughly in this budget.
All right. Are you, everyone okay with that?
Oops, oops.
Well, we have to, we're going to, we have to.
I mean, it's fine. I mean, let's, let's all speak up.
Mr. Brown, could you further explain this with the closing of the, supposed closing of the Lake George Station? When I came on board a little more than two years ago, most of these issues were already, the wheels were already rolling, turning. The additional firefighters going to full-time service. And I understand the need for the fire services and the safety of the, I guess, the community. But I think we discussed early on about the Lake George Fire Station. And for one, I was adamant about closing it. Guess that's personal for me and my district. I wouldn't even guess the thousands of homes, at least a thousand, and the thousands of structures that we have within the proximity of where that station is. And if we moved all of those firefighters out of there, the nearest station to us would be three miles minimum, and that's Midway Station. And our stations, the county stations is farther than that. So you could imagine the response time if we had anything drastic happen in that area. Yeah, I would be hell-bent against closing that station because of the proximity to any other station in that area with the communities that we have that now we're still building houses down there. And to say, leave that area without any manned fire station at all, I think would be reckless, careless to say the least. And I would be adamant against that for sure.
Yes, sir, I think that, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Fraser, but I think actually, Commissioner Jones, what he's talking about is the two forty-three up here, that Commissioner Gilliard had proposed to save this fiscal year. It didn't have really involved anything to do with the Lake George Station. It just said, let's, let's postpone filling those fourteen positions for Miller Park until later in the year. Actually, he was looking at a dollar amount. But, but you're going to need so many in order to have a, 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 a full rotation, so to speak. So, so again, you, you can't, you can't really just take the money. You got to say, okay, how, how many really make a full rotation in there? But again, he's, that, well, Commissioner Fraser wasn't talking about using the funds closing the Lake George Station. I think he was talking about maybe.
Like MC Hammer, I'm not trying to touch.
Maybe, maybe, maybe yes, taking this proposed cut. The board considered that proposed savings for this fiscal year that Commissioner Gilliard offered, related, related to Miller Station.
Where did the, excuse me, Commissioner Jones, where, where did the, the recommendation for the Lake George Station, that was one of the, Commissioner Stevens?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's down near the bottom.
Right. And that's the, the costs associated with that is?
Seven hundred eighty-one thousand.
On the, okay, the first line on the, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Am I concerned, what would that do to the?
O U ratings and all that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm following you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
It'd have a negative impact on ISO ratings, definitely.
Mr. Chair, let me say this. Down in the area of Homestown, where I live at, our closest fire station right now, for you all up here to know, is actually Lake George. It's not Midway. Am I correct, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, I mean, and actually, I mean, just, there is, there is no response coming out of Midway, very limited response coming out of Riceburg right now.
So where I'm at, if we go according to the fire plan that we had for, on the table for, I don't know, eighteen years, and finally getting there, this is what the fire plan had actually called for. Now, I'm not for closing Lake George, period. But if it comes down to that, then let's put everybody in a central location at the headquarters.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a question pertaining, Mr. Stevens just mentioned. I think it's been longer than eighteen years. I believe it's been closer to twenty-two years we've been talking about it. And when we started talking about it, and the public needs to understand that it was, we needed to go somewhere toward a full-time fire department. Well, the other thing was, your ISO rating was going to change because we were going to have water. We got water. ISO is supposed to change. And then we talked about full-time. If we had full-time, that was going to help our ISO rating. It don't change. Now, it's the distance from the fire station. So after you get further away, the ISO rating is going to stay basically the same. And I'm understanding the, you know, the dialogue about closing them. There's nobody that I think would want to close one, no more than they'd want to close a school. They're important. But there are so many things that were factored in that when we first started, it was one thing and it was, well, we need water. And then the next thing we did, we put water in the Homestown area and hydrates. And it's gone up, you know, it stayed the same. That didn't help. And then, of course, we finally took it on the chin and you got a, you know, a station there in, in the area of Homestown between there and the Bill Carter Road. So we got to always remember it, you know, we, I guess we did our research, I don't know. But, you know, we've had a couple of people that was fire chiefs and they tell you one thing now, our fire chief now says one thing and the insurance company's telling us it's totally different. It's the distance from your house to the fire station. And I don't know what it is in, in Hinesville, but, you know, most anywhere they can be in ten minutes. But I, I would not be for closing that. And another thing is what we had discussed, and I'm glad I got brought up to date on this email, Commissioner Gillard, I'm about to make sure you put me on your mailing list.
I thought, I thought I did for some, some reason. I thought I did.
We start, we starting on it from a ground one. But, I mean, how many constitutional officers that's in this room, has anybody come and talked to you and said, look, guys, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough on the taxpayers. It's going to be tough on my neighbor out over there, Bob Sprinkle, on a fixed income. It's going to be a rough time. Can y'all help? Can you go in there and cut just a little bit? I don't know if anybody's been talked to. I took it upon myself to ask one and he said, absolutely. He said, if you need me to drop mine, I cut it. It ain't no problem. He said, I don't want to put a burden on the taxpayers. So, you know, that was my biggest thing was, I looked at it. I've supported a lot that's went on, on this board. And we may throw a dart, but I'm getting too old to throw a dart. Because I always trying to hit somebody that I don't want to hit. But this budget is, I mean, any way you look at it, sixteen percent. And Joey, you've been here a long time and you know sixteen percent is, is a lot of money.
We raised it sixteen percent last year. And then in twenty-twenty-two, we raised it thirteen percent. Twenty-twenty-one, we raised it nine percent. And also in twenty-twenty, we raised it seven percent.
And it's going to continue. And when we do that, Commissioner Fraser, you know what we're going to do? We're going to have people in this community that says, y'all are already taxing me on my homes. Why do I have to still pay eight percent to have a sales tax? And, and we lived off of that and we talked to people about it.
Absolutely.
And I don't, I don't disagree that there are some things that we need.
And Commissioner Water, and I'm, I'm glad you brought, brought that point up.
Well, I wasn't through talking.
Okay, well, I, I wasn't either before you cut me off, so I'm just getting the mic back. But, but with all that being said, since I've been on this commission, I've requested two things. A possible revenue generating project in this community and an economic development authority in this community so we could take the pressure off the, the homeowners and create more commercial growth. But for some reason, I haven't been able to get that support. And what I'm saying is, with that, with a revenue generating project, which we just went to one the other day in Statesboro and met with the, with the county manager. And he told us out of his mouth, they're making money. He told us that. But for some reason, we still don't have that here. And what I'm saying is, is a part of quality of life. I mean, taxes are going to be taxes and I, and I get what you're saying. But if we have an opportunity to offset it off of the, the homeowners, let's move forward with that. And I've requested that over and over and over and over and over again. So what I'm saying is, let's find a way to create more money. Trust me, I, I pay taxes too. I, I don't like taxes being raised. But also, I'm all for quality of life and quality of life costs. So we have to figure out some way to figure out how to make more money to relieve the taxpayers. That's the only thing I'm requesting. Because, and the reason why I was going through this list, because it doesn't matter, anything on this list from, from the recreation, we approved the renovation of that gym. Now we have to have somebody to be in there. We've all committed for fire. We have to, now we built the buildings, now we have to be committed to have somebody to be in there. We've all made those commitments. I mean, we could look back at the records, we've all voted on that. And I'm not saying that, hey, it's a terrible thing. We've all voted on that. We, we sat down with the other municipalities. Matter of fact, Mr. Sprinkle was even here during that time when we brought them all together trying to find. And even then, I requested, let's consolidate the fire departments, a countywide fire department. And guess what happened? Everybody said, no, no, no. People were more worried and concerned about what the name on, on the fire truck was, instead worrying about the people. So again, we had to provide these services to our community and it costs. So we know that. So let's find alternatives to take the relief. So, let's find alternatives to take the relief, the pressure off of our citizens. That's what we need to look at. It's not about cutting the budget. The budget is, every budget throughout this, this state of Georgia is going up everywhere, especially on the county side. Trust me, I'm, I'm a part of the Board of Managers on ACCG. I, I talk to county commissioners throughout the state. We all have the same issues. When, when I go to class, same issues. So, again, and that's another request. I think we all need to start going to these ACCG conferences. Go to these meetings. Go to these classes. Because with all due respect, I've been up here for eleven years, I'm still learning. It doesn't matter if you've been here for twenty, twenty-five years. And if you have been up here that long, you definitely need to go. Because I'm telling you, it's a different time. And we have to figure out a way to offset our budget. And the only way we could do it is a revenue generating project and economic development. And I think I'm done. You can have the mic back.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, another way of what we're losing out on is, like I've said before, tax on timber after cut. Thanks to our representative, we've lost more now. Because the weight of the trucks can be much more heavier. I just showed Mr. Brown earlier how we got a road now that's in bad shape because of timber harvesting. We need to look at the industrial. We need to start charging them for certain things that they can be charged for. And I believe if we go to them in the right way, they will be glad to help. We can't keep on providing fire service, police service, EMS to these industries that are not paying their fair share to Liberty County. Something happens out there, they are looking for Liberty County to come and rescue them. But they're not paying their fair share. And if we could just get ten percent of the free port, ten percent, our taxes in Liberty County will hardly be nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have, and, uh, Ms. Richardson, if you go back to the first slide that you had where, I, I believe you had it up there, I don't, as to increase, we got the eight million, but how much of that was for, um, and I know I asked you that last time? The, um, the property tax, the property tax increase, not the tax, the property insurance increase.
It was about one point, one point five million dollars of an increase.
It was one point, it was one point five.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we had the salary study, which is one point five. To modified A, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
One point five. And then there was one other item that we had.
There was a carryover, a little over a million-dollar carryover that was, fund balance was used last year on a one-time basis that rolls into being funded this year. So, that's the other million-dollar increase.
So, overall, without those three, that it, it, it may have only, if we went and had those, we may have only went up maybe eight percent if those were not factored in this year. So, I know the finance committee, which is all of us, but we met three or four times up here, and we shaved as much as we could shave, and we've looked, and we've reviewed, and, you know, it's just, all that came on in the same year. But you have to look at, at all the homes that are being built, and they're continuing to be built. With that comes fire service and ambulance service and, and the service department, you know, all that has to be factored in. We are a growing community and a, a retirement community here.
No, we're not. With all due respect, we're not a retirement committee. And once we realize we're not, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I have the mic now.
The average age here is thirty years old.
But with that being said, we have, we, we have a lot of homes that are here. And I, I just believe that the digest is gonna be good. I, I really do. And I'm, I'm like the rest of you. I would, I want to see a lot more industry or a lot more places to shop or restaurants, whatever, because they don't require all the services that individual homes require. But we raked over this budget several days. But, and I questioned it, and I, I know all, all of us did. But at the end of the day, when you look at those that, you know, the insurance that increased, and we can all look at our insurance and see how they're increasing on our homes. And then the salary study, I'm all about giving these employees what they deserve. And we've looked at that salary study, and we waited on it for a long time. And then we had to repay the fund balance from that, from the previous year.
Yes, ma'am.
Which was a total of four million dollars. The budget went up eight. So, half of it is in those three categories.
Right. So.
I don't have a problem with the budget that we, that we presented.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready to make a, take a vote on this? Because we can sit up here all day long and run around circles.
I know, I'm ready.
Right. Just, just one question. Back, back to the, the two hundred and forty-three thousand. Do we have a consensus that we could at least take that out, or yes or no? With, with Mr. Jones, would you gain a clarification that, that's not coming from?
That won't hurt Lake George.
What message does that send to those firefighters that we're trying to hire? We, we have vacancies in.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the conversation over the full-time firefighters, like I said, all of these wheels were in motion before I came here. And there's always been talk about the county-wide fire service. When this plan was first sold, I remember it, fifteen, eighteen years ago, when we first started having this conversation, even though I wasn't a part of this body, I remember when it was being sold. And one of the biggest things that came out of it for the need for us to have it was this ISO rating that was the big seller. The more firefighters we have, the more fire stations we have, it was gonna reduce people's insurance, home insurance. That hasn't happened. But I remember clearly that that being the selling point for this fire, county-wide fire service. So, um, I just, as long as I'm assured that we will continue to have full-time fire service at that Lake George Station, I'm satisfied with that. But I will not agree to anything less than that with the fire station, for one, at Lake George, and moving those firefighters somewhere else.
Mr. Chair, let me say something about ISO. Yes, it started off with getting everything loaded. ISO has the right to change, recommend, amend any ordinance or paperwork policy that they have in place, and that's what they've done. So, now, it's also up to your insurance company that you do have. Because out in Commissioner Thrift area, since we put the fire station out there, a lot of the citizens and homeowners out there, their premium has reduced. Am I correct, Commissioner Thrift?
That is correct, but it is up to the insurance company.
It's up to your insurance company now to determine what kind of break they are going to give you. Now, it's not say ISO anymore. I agree with that. But you must provide certain issues and certain, uh, 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 service. For them to look at it.
Criteria.
Okay? So, that makes a difference, board.
Has everybody had time to?
Mr. Chair? Chair? Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready, Chair, to approve the budget as presented the other day for fifty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, two, three twenty-three. Am I correct, Sam?
Yes, sir.
Second.
In discussion. Mr. Brown, the comment about, follow up on Commissioner Frazier, about the two forty-three, that would, you said, reserve, is that the word you used? Is that what I wrote down?
Well, so just so I understand, the motion on the floor wouldn't include any changes?
Yes. The motion is, is as is.
Correct.
Yeah. So, we, we good with the motion?
But, but to answer your question, if the two forty, if, if the motion would have been to decrease by two forty-three, then it would just postpone for a few months, bringing on those fourteen.
What would those fourteen do? Is that fourteen in the upcoming class that he's supposed to start it with?
No, sir. He's already got thirteen. We got thirteen vacancies now that don't include these fourteen. So, again, if, if proposed for funding, then it would actually give you twenty-seven positions open. But, but again, they won't be needed, these would not be needed until after the new station opens anyway. And, and his primary filling of positions, like a lot of other fire departments, sorry to be so long, has come from recruits that have been trained. We've been averaging about nine that graduate out of there. So, I think his hope out of this next class is to fill the current vacancies. I'm not trying to suggest to change motion or do anything, I'm just, yeah, I'm hoping, I'm just answering that question for you that.
The motion's fine. Yeah, I mean, if we could do anything, once it's approved, it, to move something around, then, then do it.
Money's not going anywhere, it's gonna sit in and hold in the flow.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Hey, Sheriff, one, one of y'all, Chief, I'm, I'm, I had thought, I told the people that's waiting on me at the job that I was gonna be back at, um, at twelve-thirty. So, can I get an escort back to my, to my day job? I thought, I thought this would have been done. I mean, it was done, it was, you know, but I, but I'm good. I'm gonna put my flashing lights on this, this father. Follow me, because I may pass you. I'm, I'm thirty minutes late.
We got you.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion that's presented, no matter, show of hand, please. For it, opposition? The motion passes.
Is that it?
That's it. Chair, take a motion to adjourn.
We just need a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That, that's the general fund budget. You got two other operational funds that we just need to approve real quick, which is...
How, how much longer that is, Joe?
One minute.
We don't, we don't even have to read them. I trust you.
The next one is for our special revenue funds, where the, the budgets have to be adopted separately from the general fund.
And. I make a motion to approve the special revenue fund.
Yes.
In discussion, all in favor, show of hands, please. Opposition? Okay. Motion passes.
And our last one is for our capital project budgets, which includes SPOLOST, T-SPOLOST, and the Rite Army Airfield budget.
Chair, take a motion.
Yes, sir. Make a motion. Yes, second.
All in favor, SPOLOST, T-SPOLOST guys, they hope you're listening, all right?
Thank you.
Some don't, some of the commissioners don't like it.
We all spin that. All right. Make a motion that we adjourn.
A second? All in favor? Thank you.
Good work, good work, good work.